Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues on council. I want to welcome you all to the meeting of the Portsmouth City Council. I would now ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silence following the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. I now ask my colleagues to please note your presence electronically.
Seven members of city council are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do have the minutes of a call meeting on June the 27th, 2023, and a regular meeting on June 27th, 2023. Do I have a motion and a second?
Move adoption. Second.
Madam Clerk, now I would ask my colleagues on council to please vote electronically.
The minutes are adapted seven zero.
Thank you very much. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the council rules for speakers?
City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. And at the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his/her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have now come to the agenda item of public hearings. Item 23-234, item A, UP-23-09. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
Resolution granting the request of the Book Club LLC for a use permit to operate an entertainment establishment on the approximately .14 acre property located at 620 High Street in the downtown D1-T5 zoning sub-district in the downtown design overlay district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use downtown. The property is owned by Two Monkeys, Inc., planning commission recommends approval with conditions. And the resolution reads, "A resolution granting a use permit to operate an entertainment establishment at 620 High Street."
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present? If you would please come forward, sir. State your name and address, and, sir, you will have 10 minutes. You're not required to take the full 10 minutes if you do not desire, but you have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I want to say good day to council. How y'all doing today? All the citizens of Portsmouth in the place? My name is S.T. McElroy. This is my wife, April McElroy. We're the owners and operators of the book club. You see it there to your left on the screen? Doesn't look like much from outside because we haven't done a lot outside, but everybody, when they walk inside, they're amazed at the transformation inside and the feeling that you get. All right? So I think the members of city council should have received a letter from Dave Chance, from Dave Chance Photography. Should have been an email, letter sent. Everybody received it. And then maybe received a bunch of testimonials and stuff like that sent to you in your packet? Okay, thank you. All right, so I just want to read a brief statement that I prepared. Dear Mayors, Mayor, Member of City Council, I'm a little nervous. Few members of, and the fellow members of Portsmouth community. I hope this letter finds you in good health and high spirits. It is with genuine love for our community that I write to formally request a live entertainment permit for the book club located at 620 High Street, Portsmouth, Virginia, 23704, nestled in a historic district called Old Town. The book club is more than just a restaurant and bookstore. It is a sanctuary where dreams, imagination, and culture intertwine to create an unforgettable experience. The book club is a living, breathing dream of my wife. I must admit, I didn't share the dream in the beginning, but it took shape over countless hours of dedicated effort. We are both strong believers in the power of literature to transform lives, and we yearn to create a haven where literary enthusiasts and avid readers could come together to create the written word. Allow me to paint a picture of what the book club represents and the profound impact it has already had on our beloved community. Nestled amongst a tapestry of antique shops, our establishment exudes an atmosphere that seamlessly blends elegance with a warm, down-to-earth charm from the moment visitors step through the doors. They are enveloped in an ambiance that transcends time, where a sense of tranquility and intellectual curiosity coexist. Our establishment serves as a bridge between the past and the present, a link that breathes new life in the old and underappreciated corners of Old Town. By fostering a spirit of unity, creativity, and cultural exploration, we have already made our mark within the community. We have extended support to those in need by offering meals to the homeless and providing local authors with platforms for book signings and promotions and partnering with fellow small businesses to celebrate their grand openings. Our goal is to uplift the entire neighborhood and fuse in it with the vibrancy it so richly deserves. In conclusion, I implore you to consider our application for a live entertainment permit with the utmost compassion and understanding. The book club is not just a business venture, but a labor of love, a testament to our wavering belief in the power of literature, music, and community. We are committed to adhering to all regulations, ensuring responsible noise control, safety, and alcohol service. Thank you for taking the time to review our heartfelt application. We earnestly hope that you recognize the potential for cultural enrichment and community rejuvenation that the book club represents. Together, we can create a space where dreams take flight, where laughter and inspiration flourish, and where the spirit of Old Town Portsmouth is forever cherished. All right. So that was just a statement that I wrote to express our feelings, our love for the space. It's constantly repeated to us every time somebody comes into the building. I was looking for my time.
Your time, sir. So you...
It's in front of me.
Yes, when it turns red and beeps, that's when your time is...
Okay, thank you. So I don't know if the council has any questions for me or if that's even possible during this time?
It is possible, and so are there any questions from my colleagues on council at this time for the applicant? Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Mr. McElroy, I just want to be clear. How long have you been in business there on High Street?
Well, we actually broke ground in the building in 2000, right? 2020, yeah, I'm sorry, 2020, October. But we worked through COVID, just doing the things that we needed to do to the building. So we weren't actually open. We were just, you know, working on the building.
Okay.
So actual operation time, less than two years.
Vice Mayor Lucas Perk, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Elroy, for the presentation. And I know that there were some use, some conditional use options that the planning commission put in place. Could you, just for this audience, explain what those are and if you have any issues with meeting those by the timeline?
Oh, yeah. So what the planning commission asked us to do, and they said it wasn't... They weren't making us do it, but us being good neighbors, it would be a good faith effort, would be to soundproof over the front door and the back door. We're going to do that. My attorney has a proffer. Upon approval of us getting the permit, we would go ahead and take care of that, those things. So we're going to be using a two-inch-thick foam in the ceiling to keep the noise, to tamper it back down over the front door, along some of the wall, inside some of the shared space, and then going back into the back as well.
Are there any other questions from my colleagues on council? I have a couple of questions, actually. My first question is, I understand you guys have been operating as a book club, so to speak, not an entertainment venue. And I know that came with certain conditions, and I understand you've met those. In seeking to move to an entertainment venue, did you inquire or have conversations with your neighbors, your business neighbors, your residential neighbors in that block or in that community? Did you speak to anybody and let them know to kind of build some support for what you were trying to do?
I mean, at the Business Association, we told them that we had events when we actually went to the committee meetings and stuff like that, that we had events. It was stepping events and karaoke events. We told them about those. And that we also allow people to rent the building to have engagements. So, I mean, that's basically what we still want to be able to do, you know? Just karaoke and the stepping event. Like, we can't have the stepping classes right now. People, like, they really want that stuff, you know, downtown Portsmouth. It's an older crowd that we cater to, you know, like 30, 40 and up. And there's nowhere really where you can go to really enjoy yourself that I know of, that I'm comfortable taking my wife to. That's what the book club is. It's a place where you're comfortable taking your spouse or significant other.
Okay, thank you. I have another question. I noticed, you know, some months ago, when I would come up and down High Street during certain times of the day and the week, there would be papers taped all over the windows. The windows would be taped up. Why were you taping up the windows? I'm just curious as to why that was happening.
Any private events that we have that people don't want pedestrians in the pictures? Wedding events, playdate events, anything like that where kids probably shouldn't see? Adults playing musical chairs and hula-hoo competitions and dress competitions and stuff like that? We seal up.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to both of you for being here tonight and for wanting to operate a business in Portsmouth. The feedback that I've received via email and phone calls in anticipation of tonight's discussion have pointed out, and you just pointed it out again, that there have been special events that you have hosted during the time that y'all have been in business, and those special events are contrary to the current zoning and use permit that you're operating under. The feedback that I've gotten suggests that when you all are operating as a book club, that everything's great. It's the special events, the karaoke and the events that are making a lot of noise, running into midnight, spilling over on the sidewalk till 2 o'clock in the morning in some cases. The mayor mentioned papering over the windows, which I heard your explanation, but to be frank, it leaves me scratching my head. So I'd be interested in understanding from your perspective, when you decided to host special events or lease your facility out, were you aware that you were operating in violation of your zoning and use permit as it currently exists?
Well, we went through a couple of different changes since we've been open. At first, we were like a hall, right? We were considered a banquet hall. So I don't know how a banquet hall would make money without renting out the space. Councilman, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, but through all of the zoning and use permit iterations that you have been through, my understanding is there's never been authorization to operate as an entertainment venue, which is what's required to do karaoke and the kinds of things that you just described that you've been hosting. And in fact, the package that we were provided before this evening announces seven different special events, like karaoke, every Thursday night. So over the past six months, seven different special events where you're operating contrary to your current zoning and use permit restrictions. So I'm wondering if you were even aware that you were operating contrary to your zoning and use permit? And if so, why did you do it?
Okay, when we were about to apply for our live entertainment use permit, we were sent a letter from the city, and it was at the planning commission hearing stating, "Hold off. Do not apply for your live use permit right now. The laws are changing in the city. Run your, yeah, just do your business, but hold off on applying for the permit."
Okay, that was spring of 2021, according to the information that we were provided in our read-ahead package. So from spring of 2021 until now, you were told to hold off, but apparently you've invited special events to occur contrary to how you're zoned and what your use permit allows.
So if we got the letter, councilman, in spring of 2021 telling us to hold off on applying, and then we got the letter that brought us here to this session saying that we need to apply because we're out of compliance?
Yep.
From one letter to the next, we did what we needed to do. They told us to come in and apply, so we applied this time.
Yeah, so I appreciate that you're applying after the fact, but I'm wondering why you went ahead and conducted events that were contrary to zoning and use permit? I mean, it suggests to me that you were ignoring the rules that you were supposed to be operating under.
To my knowledge, we were doing everything within the law.
Were there any compliance issues, citations that were delivered to you from the city?
No, sir.
So city manager, there are things in the package that you provided to us that suggest that there were zoning and compliance issues. Were those delivered to the McElroy's?
So what you have is everything, basically, that you have in your packet that came from the planning commission meeting. And so in those, in that same package you have, in both packages, there were some compliance complaints that were actually delivered by the commissioner or, at the time, compliance. So I don't have my photo. I gave them all away. But there were two non-compliance. One by Doug Smith, who was at the time. And I'm just providing information that was already there. Notice to comply, and this was on March 10th, 2021, for Two Monkeys, Inc. That's the landlord.
That's the owner of the building.
Because the owner of the building actually received this as the registered agent, because the owner is their building, but the book club is occupying the facility, they received the non-compliant letter based on this information, because I'm assuming, and I don't want to assume, because they own the facility. And it was given to them to say, whoever was occupying that building, according to the advertisement posted online, there are plans to allow functions such as nightclub, party events, and other social events different than what the building has historically been used for. And you all have that. That was actually provided during the planning commission meeting. So that was one non-compliant. The other zoning non-compliant was a zoning violation, case ZON202300396, non-permitted use commercial industrial corrective action to be completed. And so you all had that from the planning commission as well.
Okay, thank you. So in addition to those zoning and use permit compliance issues, there were apparently noise complaints fairly regularly made during those special events. Where would those noise complaints come to? Would they come to the police?
So the noise complaints, as you see in your packet for number 34, they were complaints that were given or called by the business owners within Old Town about the noise and the issues that they seem to be having with the establishment.
And do those complaints come into compliance, to zoning, or do they come to the police?
It seems like they go everywhere, answer my cell.
So the reason I'm asking, so Chief Jenkins included a letter in the package that we were provided, objecting to extending an entertainment license to the book club as we're reviewing this tonight. I know Chief Jenkins isn't here, but Assistant Chief Prince is here. I wonder, Mr. Mayor, if we can invite him to the podium to speak to what, some of the details that are in Chief Jenkins' letter?
My only concern is that Chief Jenkins did provide this letter, and Assistant Chief Prince is just coming on board, so I'm not sure how much additional information he could give that's already based on the information you have. I just don't want it to be a little back and forth because I'm not sure if he's up on the details because he was actually not here at that time.
Okay. So is it fair to say, Madam City Manager, that Chief Jenkins' recommendation to deny approval is based on concerns about public safety? Would he have any reason to make a recommendation to deny other than concerns for public safety?
Well, I think from talking to Chief Jenkins, and we have had an extensive conversation about the book club, the biggest concern was, I don't think that the biggest concern was that you're a book club because I think people have enjoyed going to your location for various reasons. I think the issue comes in because you started as something that you weren't. And I understand your explanation from someone from zoning at the time. But I think the concern comes in, if you're starting and you're working in a situation where you're not established yet, what is to come later? In other words, you're already working out of compliance, and we are having complaints. I think the concern for Chief Jenkins was, if you're going to be a book club, be a book club. If you're going to be a restaurant entertainment, then let's be a restaurant entertainment. And it goes back to the situation where you were told, hey, you know, the laws are going to change, but what was the follow-up? You know, I don't know if the city dropped the ball. I don't know if it's your desire to have done that, to stay and say, you know, the city could have considered, maybe you weren't interested anymore, in becoming that. That was your call to make. I just think that it becomes complicated when you start working outside of what you established yourselves as and then come back. And then when we have issues or concerns and it pulls our safety, public safety, to those things and the complaints that we get from your neighbors, that is what brings this situation to where we are now. And I get a lot of emails. I get a lot of phone calls. I get the calls that say, "Ride by and see the stuff on the window," and the ones, "Somebody's wandling you outside." I get all that. And so, yeah, trust me, I get everything. Yeah. So, and I understand that you all do some subletting. I don't know what's in your lease. I just know when I look at your permit, you're a book club. But when we go by, there are several things happening outside. So again, I don't think the biggest issue is your dream, is what you want to do. But it's working inside of what you request to be and then working outside of what you're allowed to be is what creates the concern. I don't know about for council, but it definitely creates the concern for me. So again, you know, I'm just concerned about, because I get so many complaints. I'm just trying to understand, or just answer your question. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to ramble.
Okay, thanks. So I do worry that the police chief has raised this issue. I do worry that there have been noise complaints. You mentioned that during the planning commission that it was suggested to you that you address sound damping. My understanding from the planning commission was the zoning code requires sound dampening in the front and rear exits, so that's not optional, that's required. I think it was suggested during the planning commission that you consider installing sound suppression in the walls and the ceiling of the facility. So as I was going through the package here, it's important for you to know what you have to do and what your neighbors would like for you to do. But it's also important for you to know that the city has a noise ordinance that requires that noise-producing events, like the events that you've conducted as special events, have noise limits that have to be complied with. And the noise limits are different, whether it's a residential area or a commercial area. I wonder if we, is this considered a residential area or a commercial area for the purpose of the noise ordinance?
Would you like to ask someone in planning that question?
Yeah, if someone from planning...
Can someone in planning answer the question for the councilman, please?
Because there are a whole bunch of folks who live there, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's a zone residential.
From a zoning perspective, the downtown mixed use, we don't deal with the noise ordinance.
Well, so there's no noise ordinance that's applicable in mixed use?
The code does recommend that they not have loud music and offensive noise. It does recommend that. Noise from the establishment shall comply with City Code Section, I think it's a section number.
24-255?
Yes.
Yep. And I think 24-255 doesn't exclude this area from the noise ordinance. It's just a different level of noise that's allowed compared to a residential area. So important that you know that if this goes through and you're approved, that there are noise ordinance requirements that you'll be required to comply with. That's all the questions I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker for you all, if you just remain, is Dr. Whitaker. You have the floor, sir.
I'm going to yield. I believe there are some other council persons. I want to yield and let them speak.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mr. and Mrs. McElroy. Mayor, my question actually is to the city manager. And Chief Jenkins is not here tonight, obviously. But staff recommended denial of this as well. Is there someone on staff that can speak to their concerns?
I really, I guess my concern is, because it's already gone through zoning and it's already gone through the commission, I don't want the staff to really have to go back and have that same conversation. Now, the information was provided. I understand there was some opposition from zoning based on the complaints that they received from citizens that showed up or had been complaining about the permit use. But I'm not sure, and they did write a letter. I don't... I don't really feel like, did you wanna speak to it? Or because it was part of what was addressed at the commission?
Can I, you know, we have a full package here, and I think the public doesn't have the opportunity to view the package that we have. So I think, I think we need to hear from someone on staff on what the concerns are.
Mr. Mayor.
Obviously.
I've got the floor.
You don't determine point of order. That's for the chair to determine.
Sir, sir, before, 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 so, let me deal with the point of order issue. First of all, the gentleman had the floor. Hold on, just hear me out before you begin to move in a direction. A point of, a point of order, your point of order is, what is your point of order, sir?
Thank you. The point of order is that procedurally, we have followed going through staff and then through a planning commission. And we have a recommendation before us from planning commission. To go back to staff at this point is out of order because we have a recommendation from the planning commission.
I understand what you're saying in terms of procedurally, and that is a procedure. However, as a council member, there was a denial. There was a denial by, by the planning department. I think he is well within his right to ask the question as to what that was. And so as a point of order, I'm going to have to say that your point of order is not recognized as a result because he has, he has a right to answer, ask a question. Sir, you have the floor.
Point of information. Who, I just wanna know, who denied it?
It was denied by the planning department. So planning department.
Not the commission?
The planning department denied the request.
Okay.
And we have witnessed, just for clarification, in instances, there has been issues or planning, or excuse me, permit requests that have come before this body that have been denied by the planning department, and we have proceeded with them. The question on the floor is, the councilman asked a explanation from the planning department, not the planning commission, as to what the reason was behind that, and that is a fair question.
Thanks for clarifying that for me.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, my question to staff is, what were the concerns with staff not supporting this?
If you would allow me to read the letter, and then, because this was, again, brought up at the planning commission, so those who weren't present can actually hear what the letter actually said. And then if you have questions from that, that would be sufficient. Please forgive me. I'm looking for it because there were several in the packet.
Mr. Mayor, while she's looking, can I just ask a point of information regarding the facts of the case? I just wanna make sure we're clear on the ownership issue.
Yes, sir. I think that is fair.
Yep. So, Mr. McElroy, the book club rents from a building that's not owned by you?
That's correct.
Okay. So the owner received the information regarding violations and complaints?
We received the one that brought us here, what day was that? Like four months ago, yeah. We received that one. The other ones I don't know about.
They were directed to the owner's building.
Oh, yes. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that.
Thank you, sir.
This letter serves, this letter is from the interim planning director, and this was part of the packet that, from Stephen Jenkins.
If you all could just bear with us, we just have a process whereby we're looking through the information.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask another question while we're looking through?
Absolutely. You have the floor, sir.
The complaints that went to the owner, how was it determined that the issue of the complaint was actually you?
I'm not certain. I'm not certain.
Because that owner could have been renting the building out to others for functions.
I know, I know how long we've had the lease, but I'm not certain anything about that. The letter that we got in March was.
Because I'd say it's a different light on it, that you're not the owner of the building.
So I can't, Ms., do you got it? Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. So, planning, the planning staff does not, we provide a recommendation on the application. And after the staff report was distributed to planning commission, additional information was discovered. So a clarification letter was provided to planning commission prior to that June sixth meeting. If that's what you'd like me to read, I can read that.
Yes, please.
Okay. Planning staff is providing the following clarification regarding the permitting timeline for six twenty High Street, which is the subject property for a use permit application, U P dash twenty-three oh nine. In October twenty twenty, the applicant was issued zoning clearances for the following buyright uses. A bookshop, including book club meetings, storytimes, artistic workshops, classes, and refreshments, including prepackaged foods, coffee, and wine. The zoning clearances noted that any use requiring a use permit was prohibited on the property until a use permit was obtained. On March tenth, twenty twenty-one, the building officials sent a notice to comply to the property owner. The notice to comply was included in the staff report as an attachment to the letter from the chief of police. The notice to comply referenced online advertisements indicating plans to use the building for events other than as a store. It stated that such events would constitute a change in use occupancy under the United Uniform Statewide Building Code, and that a building permit and certificate of occupancy issued by the building official would therefore be required. It further noted that approval and clearance from the zoning administrator is required. The applicant responded to the notice to comply by submitting preliminary plans to the building official to obtain a building permit and a certificate of occupancy. The building official reviewed those plans. And on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, he emailed the applicant comments, including that all necessary zoning approvals would need to be obtained before operating any entertainment use. On March nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, the applicant responded to the app, the building official's email by stating, "Good day, Mr. Smith. We currently have zoning clearance to operate as a coffee shop for books and wine bar. We want to keep it that way." Stacy Porter informed me that we couldn't apply for an entertainment permit at the moment due to possible changes and regulations being made this year. So we will, we will hold on any events until we can apply. But we want to continue moving forward with our current zoning clearance. And the email referencing this is attached. On April sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, Stacy Porter of the planning department emailed April to memorialize a video meeting they had held to discuss applying for a use permit for an entertainment establishment. With her email, Ms. Porter forwarded a use permit application and the planning commission meeting schedule. The applicant continued with the building official process to obtain a building permit and the certificate of occupancy and obtain those approvals on April twenty-fifth and August twenty-fifth, respectively, but did not file the use permit application for an entertainment establishment until April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Ultimately, the applicant is now pursuing obtaining a use permit to, to allow the events that he wants to have.
That he had.
That he has had. So the zoning ordinance states that a, even if there's an existing violation, the means to correct that violation can be an application that would then approve the use that is wanted.
So my point is, he started those activities without a use permit?
Yes, he did.
Yeah. That, I mean, that's the crux of the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. McElroy, I just wanted to let you know that I have been privy to several use permit hearings where there have been applicants who were not in compliance at the time. They came before us, and I believe you're here because you wanna be in compliance.
Absolutely.
And they were issued use permits. And so I don't want you to think that what you're going through is some novel procedure, but I have seen it before where there have been those who were operating outside of the permit. They came before council, just like you are, and they presented their plan. And I don't see anything where you are objecting. You're saying that these are the things you're gonna do.
Absolutely.
And I think just like we allowed other businesses a chance to operate, you should receive that same chance as well. There may have been issues, but this is where we try to bring you in line to correct it. And I think you should be given that opportunity, just like everyone else has.
Thank you.
Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Chopp made a very good statement in regards to when a business has been deemed in violation, that the corrective action is to become compliant. And that's what I see in this situation, is a business that was out of compliance, that had violations, that is now trying to correct that issue. High Street, Old Town is a mixed-use environment that is destined for hopefully some rejuvenation. And so with that being said, I'm, I think enough has been said. So I'll support the approval.
Councilman Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
I'm actually agree with Councilman Tillage. Those were along the, along the lines that I was actually gonna put out. But I did wanna say that I've heard a lot of great things about you guys. I've actually came there before, and you guys are bringing people to the city and doing a lot of great things for those people. And so I'm in support of what you guys doing. Hopefully, the rest of this council can get in support of that because what you guys doing is very good for the city. It's, we don't have a lot of businesses that bring people to the city and give them something to do, and give the people here something to do. So I'm definitely in support of it. Hopefully, we can get enough votes to get you guys in compliance so that you can continue to do what you do and continue to bring people to our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sirs. Are there any other comments from my colleagues on council?
I have comments, but we have some other speakers. So if I could reserve my comments until after we hear from other speakers.
That is fair, ma'am. You yield your time, and then once the speakers come up and have their say, you can certainly ask for the floor, and you will have it. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. McElroy.
Thank you. Thank you.
We do have some registered speakers for this public hearing item. The first registered speaker is Mr. Michael Massey. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. And I do wanna say, because this is a public hearing item, when you come forward to speak on this item, you are not required to have signed up to speak on this item. So if you wish to come forward, please state your name and address. You will have five minutes. The most important thing I need to convey is, your comments must be germane to the public hearing item. If you go off and start talking about the color of your flowers and other things, that is not applicable to the public hearing. If you do that, as mayor and presiding officer, I'm gonna ask you to get back on track. I'm gonna give you one chance. If you do not get back on track, I'm gonna ask you to end your comments and have a seat. You must speak on the public hearing item. Thank you, sir. You have the floor.
My name is Michael Massey. I live at four zero two nine Estates Lane. That's in the Estates at River Point in Portsmouth. I've been there for about eighteen years. I represent the McElroy's. They are friends of mine, and I represent them. And I represent them because I believe in what they're doing. Let me just go back and just talk about a factual point, then I'll get to the legal point, then I'll sit down. You know, I don't know what you all do at night. I'm in Portsmouth at night. I'm actually on High Street all the time, late at night. And I don't know if you all know what's going on. These comments would suggest that some of you all don't know what's going on in Portsmouth downtown. I go to all of the businesses because I love all people. I go to Barons. I go to Longboards. I go everywhere. Drunk people everywhere, all up and down High Street making noise. I don't care if the owner of the business is white, black, blue, or brown. If I can go and have a good time, Michael Massey is going because I wanna spend my money in Portsmouth. But what happens if you decide that you want to operate a business? I was wondering why these people spend all this money to hire me. If you want to operate a business and you are a color, you ought to feel like when you go to Portsmouth, because I love Portsmouth for real because I can move if I want to. You ought to feel like you're gonna be treated equitably. Equity means going up and down High Street and see that all of the businesses are doing the same thing late at night. All of them have people that are a little too loud after they drink some of that booze. That's, that's all of them. That's not limited to any particular business. But these businesses are good businesses. I've never been harmed, hurt, anything. I've been in businesses with DJs. Almost all of them in that corridor in Denbry in high. DJs, loud as I don't know what. And a very good experience. What government officials always have to understand and appreciate that citizens might not appreciate is that your decision-making always have to be mindful of not having a disparate impact on a particular group. It makes people feel bad. It doesn't mean that you have a racial intent upon you. But if I wanna operate a business and I'm, and there's a man that has a business doing the same thing a block away, and I'm asking you for the exact same thing that that man or that woman has, and you tell me no? It makes me feel a certain way. It makes me feel like you're treating me without equity. The McElroy's have not asked for a helping hand. They do not need it. They want to operate a business, a successful business. Have they been perfect? No. But they're my clients now. They, they will be in compliance or they will not be my clients. So they've had some problems. But as a couple of you council persons have mentioned, they're here to fix those problems. Let's like Portsmouth be different. We're different. We are gonna treat all of our citizens the same. We will not let this divide that is across this nation divide Portsmouth. I'm gonna love every white person that's nice to me, every Mexican person, every blue person. And I'm going to enjoy, and I'm gonna enjoy Portsmouth, and I want you all to be equitable and treat these people just like you've treated the other businesses. That's all we ask. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, who has signed up for the public hearing, is Mr. Bill Schlat. And sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council.
Excuse me, sir. If you would please pull the microphone closer to your mouth so that we all can hear you. We want to hear you. So, please.
My name is Bill Schlat, and I've owned and operated Anderson Wright Rooms and Gardens at six twenty-two High Street for the past twenty-eight years. I live above the shop, and so have been a resident in the six hundred block for twenty-eight years. I grew up in the area, but after graduating ODU, I moved away for several years. I came back in nineteen ninety-five, purchased a historic. I came back in 1995, purchased a historic building in the 600 block, back when most of the buildings were boarded up and vacant. I spent a year and a half renovating before I, before I could move in and open my shop. My business began to take off. I saw other businesses come in. I began to see the 600 block come to life. A few years into it, I bought a much larger building next to me and expanded my business. I've received a good deal of publicity and goodwill over the years, and have been fortunate to have not only survived, but flourish. Anderson Wright has built a following well beyond Portsmouth, and has kept retail alive in our downtown, and I feel it has given Portsmouth something to be proud of. Living above my shop has been a key component of my success, and an added joy to the overall experience. However, downtown living can be tight, as we are literally joined at the hip with one building connected to the other. It requires a certain amount of tolerance, as you cannot control everything around you. It also pays to be considerate and respectful to your neighbors, in the hopes it will be reciprocated. For the past two years, I've received very little consideration from my neighbors at the book club. Our buildings share a wall, and the amplified booming music on club nights vibrate my building and rattle the windows, and fills my space with their music. I spoke with Mr. McElroy on several occasions, and told him the loud music was affecting my quality of life. I even had him come over to hear for himself how intense and intrusive the music was. When I mentioned how objects were vibrating, he mentioned the glasses behind his bar were also vibrating. Today's sound systems are powerful, and on club nights, you can hear the music from one end of the block to the other, and hear it bouncing off the buildings across the street. It fills the street, and you can assure the tenants at the newly restored professional building will be affected. It's been argued, all this just adds to the vitality of downtown, and it's what makes people want to live here. Nothing could be further from the truth, and it's a mere rationalization for bad behavior. The pounding bass of the music is like a sledgehammer against my 1907 brick building, and cracks are forming that I have never seen before. You must vote no to this entertainment permit, as the amplified music is shaking my building apart and ruining my night's sleep. No one would want to live next to this, and no one should expect me to. They have, may have a right to party, but they do not have a right to bring their party into my bedroom. I have a large shop with a large inventory, which I run all by myself, dealing with orders, deliveries, pricing, along with taking care of bills and bookkeeping and customers. It keeps me hopping, and I depend on a good night's sleep. You may hear tonight apologies for past transgressions, pleas of ignorance, and promises of improved behavior, but after two years of total disregard for those around them, and blatant disregard of city ordinances, then the saying goes, "When a person shows you who they are, believe them the first time." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Dr. Joseph Kaplan. Dr. Joseph Kaplan, sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. Five minutes.
My name is Joseph Kaplan, and I live at 623 Queen Street, which is almost behind 620 High Street. Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, I am here on behalf of twenty-three residents of downtown Portsmouth. Most of us have lived in the downtown area, which is highly residential as well as commercial, for over twenty years. The residents who live a stone's throw away from 620 High Street are objecting most strongly to this application for an entertainment license in this area, and we are not alone. I will not recap the information you already have from the planning staff, and the, their denial with input was not from one, but from several departments, and we've taken that seriously. In addition, I won't repeat the remarks made regarding the Chief of Police, Stephen Jenkins, who felt so strongly about this, that he sent a letter to the planning committee dated May 30th, 2023, setting out the reasons for objecting to an entertainment license being granted at 620 High Street to this applicant. You may want to discuss it with him or read his letter. An entertainment license, in our opinion, would be a disaster for downtown Portsmouth. It will no doubt become a nightclub, and there is no place for this among the residents and commercial occupants of downtown. This is what we believe. Vandalism will take place. Residents and businesses will leave. Property values will decrease. People will stop shopping downtown. There will be parking in private areas, and it will no doubt, in our opinion, lead to the use of drugs and guns, and people will not be safe. This matter is now in your hands.
Thank you, sir. Our next registered speaker is Mr. Ed Fourlines. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. I'm Ed Fourlines, from 462 Washington Street. I'm the owner of 620 High Street. I'm here in support of the use permit for an entertainment establishment used by my tenants, April and Estee McElroy. I can offer perspective that likely no one else in attendance here can provide. I've been doing business with the McElroy's since we signed a lease in April, for April, to operate her hair salon at my business, my building at 614 High Street in January of 2016. They're good people, honest, enterprising, hardworking, and successful at everything I have seen them undertake. They have always been forthright, and kept their word in our agreements. As, as some of you may know, my business has owned and leased commercial properties in the 600 block of High Street and on Washington Street since 1997. The majority of my tenants have been African-Americans. I hold no prejudices regarding race or any other differences. We are all created equal. I have been fortunate, I guess, you could say, certainly privileged. I understand that, and do my best to treat everyone with the respect and kindness I hope to receive. When we decided to purchase property in downtown Portsmouth, we were working with Gordon Wheatley, the longtime Development Director of PRHA. He acted as our champion and guided us through the maze of processes and approvals required to purchase, renovate, and open our business, as well as to purchase other properties in downtown. There are no Gordons now. There are no Guides, no Champions, for those who must wander through the maze of departmental regulations and approvals. The fact that the McElroy's had made it to this point is a testimony unto itself, but it hasn't been easy, it hasn't been inexpensive, and it hasn't been perfect. They made mistakes, were misguided and misinformed. One hand didn't know what the other was doing. We're at this point now. I give them credit for their perseverance. They persisted when others would, and when others have walked away. I was chairman of the Chamber of Commerce in Portsmouth about twenty years ago. The regional leadership recognized my abilities and appointed me to the position of Regional Vice Chair for Membership. I served in that capacity for a number of years. One thing that struck me during that time was the lack of minority-owned businesses in this region. It's not for a lack of minority population, or the spending capacity of minorities who might patronize minority-owned businesses. I saw that it was because we've come to realize, as we've come to realize over the years, privilege, or the lack of privilege or opportunity. The McElroy's embody something that harkens me back to the words of our former mayor, Dr. James Holly, something he'd say every time he gavelled the meeting into order. We're here tonight to do the people's business, to listen to the hopes, dreams, and aspirations they bring for us, and we hope we can fulfill those. The McElroy's have been good, caring, and conscientious neighbors. They truly have shown their hopes, dreams, and aspirations through their persistence and their continuing struggle to move forward, the fulfillment of reaching their dream. I lay my head down to sleep every night, less than fifty feet from that building, and I have not been disturbed by any raucous late-night music or unruliness from this building, from this business. I choose to live downtown, where late-night activity is commonplace and expected. We can walk to restaurants, the movies, and a concert, but with that convenience comes the understanding that mixed uses of downtown requires tolerance for activities that those who choose to live in the suburbs don't have to contend with. I would not be here tonight offering my assessment of April and Estee McElroy if I didn't honestly believe every word I have spoken to you. The book club is a benefit to the business community here. It provides something that is unique. If my, I may continue for just a moment, I'm almost finished.
Sir, if you would go ahead and finish your thought.
Thank you.
That will be fine.
It provides something that is unique, something that currently does not exist. The McElroy's are a perfect match for the city's stated goals of attracting SWAM, small women and minority businesses. To do business in our diverse municipality, I respectfully ask each of you to demonstrate the unity and cooperation that our city sorely needs. Respectfully, I ask that each of you vote yes to approve this application. Thank you, and I'm prepared for any questions. You may have.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That, that concludes our registered speakers. Once again, this is a public hearing. You are not required to have signed up to become, to come forward and speak on this particular item. If you wish to come forward, please do so. It's gonna be one at a time. Now, we can't all come together. One at a time, you will come forward and state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City, all of you, good evening. My name's Elaine Kaplan. I moved to Old Town Portsmouth twenty-three years ago. We bought a house on Court Street. We bought a building at 630 High Street. I opened my interior design store called Ma Maison, very successful, and upstairs, we rented it out to tenants. I now live at 623 Queen Street, because we sold our house on Court Street, but I'd like to inform you about something. There was a place on Court Street called Brutus. It then became The Mansion. The people that owned it misled the council and said that The Mansion was going to be just for weddings, bar mitzvahs, parties, when actually, it was a full-blown club.
Ma'am?
Yes. What I'm saying, Mayor, is this.
I, I understand where you're going with that, but, but, but we have to keep.
Okay, so I, I'm about to do that, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just giving you notice.
Thank you.
That we can't continue on the conversation with another, another place.
Okay.
We have to talk specific to what the use permit is talking to.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So, as far as a book club is concerned, that is fine. We're all happy with that. But to give a license, to have, to make it into a club, not a book club, a club, is another story. Because we don't, I mean, my husband and I got attacked. We literally got attacked a few months ago, outside where we lived. And I don't know the McElroy's. They have never come and apologized for the loudness of the music. They've never spoken to me. I'm there all the time. I walk my dog all the time, all around. But I have seen the windows covered over. We call them heavies, these guys standing outside, dressed in black, with things in their hands to hit somebody, if something's wrong.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. The issue is with the use, and all of these innuendos about violence, I think is out of order, because we know where you're going with this.
But that's what we're frightened of.
No, we, well, sorry.
We are, we are.
Sir, ma'am, hold on. First of all, there is a point of order on the floor. I'm listening to you.
I think.
And, and I, I need you, I need you to explain. I understand where you're going, so, so, so give me the, the rest of it.
The applicant, the, the speaker needs to stay on point. All of these references to violence are out of order.
Fair enough. Once again, we must keep, we must keep, the point of order is recognized. We must keep, excuse me? Once again, you are able to continue. If there are any more, if there are any more items that come before us that are not within the order of what we're discussing.
Okay.
You're gonna have to take a seat.
Well, I think I'm just here to say, I've lived here in Old Town for about twenty-three years, and it's a beautiful place. I don't bring up the subject of whatever color somebody is. I just don't see it. I'm just not that kind of person. My interior design store had people, patrons, from all over, from every part of this Hampton Roads area. I never defined them by what they look like, but I live here, and I am worried. I'm worried about what this could become. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Once again, this is a public hearing. If you would like to come and speak on this public hearing item, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Ma'am, it seems like you were motioning first, so you come forward. Ma'am, we will get to you next. So, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
My name is Yolanda Clayton, and I live at 1747 Des Moines Avenue, Portsmouth, Virginia. I haven't lived here for twenty years. I just moved here, July the third was two years. Once I moved here, I looked at my husband, and I was like, what have we done? It was nothing for us to do, nothing. It was, just seemed like it was nothing. One day, I ran into a lady, and we were talking about different things to do. I explained to her that I was an author. She told me that it was a place on High Street called The Book Club. Once I went to The Book Club, and I met Ms. April, it changed everything for me and my perspective of Portsmouth and things to do. I am an author. I have had a book signing there. I have had book releases there with family and friends to come out. I have had different meetings with different people. It's a nice environment to go to read a book, meet with other business-minded people. It is a very, very nice place to be. The things that they want. The things that they want to do is entertainment. I notice everybody keeps saying a club, but entertainment is not just considered a club. I will be fifty this year. Some of the entertainment they would like to do, karaoke, that's a fun thing for older people to do. It's safe, it's fun, it's considered entertainment. It's not a club. It's entertainment. Other things that people do for entertainment could be bingo night. That's entertainment. It's not a club. So I think people get things mixed up when they say entertainment, they immediately think club. We have the slide dances. That's stepping, that's old school, that's entertainment, but it's not a club. And I would hope everybody see the difference between entertainment and a club. And these are wonderful people. And now I feel like it is something to do, going to The Book Club in Portsmouth, Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Once again, this is a public hearing. And Ms. Biggs, would you please come forward? Now is your time. If you would state your name and address, ma'am, you will have five minutes. You have the floor, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Donna Biggs, and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in Portsmouth. What's interesting about this is two ideas. And one of the ideas is expansion. And what's interesting about Old Town, I was wondering, did they go before the Historic Preservation Commission? Talk about Old Town, Old Town, I said, well, did they go to Historic Preservation Commission to research all this, to see what historically it was gonna be doing? But really, it's about, and, yeah, people live in here. Things are being done here. So it's really gonna be difficult to, to distinguish between having a book club and you do your little things, and then you wanna expand it to entertainment. So that's where the issue is, entertainment. And it's gonna be about what perceive, people perceive as sound. So it can be like little songs and stuff like that, but then it can get loud. So it's difficult to decide. How loud is this organization gonna be for the people living around? A fellow played the music up the street for me, and I was, I walked up there and told him. He said, "Don't report me, I won't do it anymore." I said, "Okay." So he didn't. So that's a really tough decision because people are living together with entertainment and activities and stuff like that. So it has to be a balance on how loud is that music gonna be? So y'all have a tough decision. Good luck.
Thank you, ma'am. Once again, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on this public hearing item, if you would come forward, state your name and address. And sir, we'll get you next, okay? State your name and address, and sir, you will have five minutes.
Good evening. Mark Kadulagutrowski, you can reach me at P.O. Box 50141, Portsmouth 23703. So I really hold the city of Portsmouth responsible for the noise issues that occur in these boundary situations. For the first twelve of my twenty-seven years as a resident of Portsmouth, I lived in Old Town on Middle Street, and the worst noise offenses were city activities held at North Landing. They went on for hours into the evening. The decibel levels were off the chart, and the city's noise ordinance specifically exempts city events from the noise ordinance. How great is that? I wanna see businesses in Portsmouth. I wanna see them thrive, and I wanna see residents in Portsmouth who can walk to businesses, can help businesses thrive. But if, if we are in a combat zone in terms of the environment, you know, that, that strip of High Street that borders the Old Town neighborhood, the level of noise on High Street has a tremendous effect on the quality of life in the neighborhood. You drive the residents out, you undercut the businesses. And businesses are not the ones best able to regulate themselves because they are responding to their perceptions of what the public wants. So if you have entertainment, and they believe that the public wants loud entertainment, and there is no arbiter as to how loud that entertainment can be, then it's a free-for-all. And you're ultimately undercutting the viability of the business district and the viability of the residential district. So what do we do? The only thing you have on your plate is whether to approve this use. I would like to see you approve this use, but I would like to see you follow up by going back and taking a good, hard look at what your noise ordinance says, and see if you can't bring some more rationality into the regulatory process, for the good of the businesses, for the good of the residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Now, sir, the gentleman that was standing before, if, no, sir, you, you were, you were before, so please come forward, and you can come after this gentleman. Sir? He's coming, he's coming up first, sir, and then you'll have an opportunity to come after him. Thank you very much. If you would state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
I'm Dave Chance. I own a business that also shares a wall with The Book Club, and I, I sent you all a letter in support of this application. I have had nothing but good experiences with my neighbor. Never had an issue that wasn't resolved over a cordial conversation. I don't like karaoke. I'm not gonna go to karaoke, but that's why they have their business and I have mine. I don't really know what else to say.
Thank you, sir. If you would please state your name and address, sir, you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council and, and state staff. My name is Coleman Young. I live in, on Denwitty Street. I've lived in, in the Old Town area for almost fifty years. I hate to say that, it makes me feel very old. But let me, let me mention something. City council's come out on a couple times and said, "We're open for business. We're open for business." City council has said that downtown area is a entertainment district that's been approved by city council. So really, the question is, are we open for business? Have we voted for entertainment district? Are these just e, e, uh, simple superficial ideas with no backing? Or are you gonna make a solid commitment?
But sir, sir, excuse me, clarification, just for a clarification point. I'm not aware that the city council has voted as an entertainment district downtown. The only entertainment district that we approved as a council is where the casino is. So just a point of interest, a point of information. I'm not sure the city has voted to call that an entertainment district. That's for clarification. The only entertainment district that we have approved as a council is the entertainment district at the casino. So you may continue.
Okay. 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 What, what you have here, okay, is a, a, a small business owner, mom and pop that's applying for a entertainment use permit. Same as Mr. Massey, Mr. Farland. They, they're young, I mean, and they mean well, they have the, the best intentions. Maybe they didn't make the right decisions and they weren't in compliance. But the thing is that you have a dream. Ms. McElroy has a dream. If you watch the video during the planning commission, there are tears coming down her eyes because she wants this. She'll do what's ever necessary to, to, to have it happen. It's a love story. The, the husband, like you mentioned, if he had a choice, he wouldn't do it. But he works an everyday time job in construction, tired, comes home, it, I mean, comes to the place, does the construction, does the renovation in that. It's not his dream, it's his wife's dream. That, you know, you can easily, on a use permit, you can check the boxes and, and fulfill the requirements. But this is a situation that goes from the head, the logic, to the heart. These are people that want to, to provide an asset. If you, if you can see in his heart, he wants an asset. He wants the, the chess tournaments and the, and karaoke. Karaoke, like you mentioned, it's thirty- and forty-year-old people that come there, a group of people come there, and they sit around and, and each get up and sing. I mean, this is, is not a high musical type of situation. All I can say is, they're very, I've been to the establishment, they've done renovations. It's a very accommodating place for, for, to get a cup of coffee, pastries, read a book, bring your significant other there to, uh, have a nice enjoyable evening. And I'm in, uh, you do have a noise, okay? There is a conflict in, in the noise type of thing going on. But I, I'm very sure that Mr. McElroy would be willing to sit down and make accommodations for it. And I speak very highly in, in support that this be taken seriously and that you make a commitment to, to your statement that you're open for business. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Once again, this is a public hearing. If you wish to come forward and speak on this public hearing item, you can do so, and you will have five minutes. Ma'am, if you could state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Lindsay Anderson. I stay at Six Savage Court, Portsmouth, Virginia, in the Churchland area of Portsmouth. I run a local nonprofit here out of Portsmouth, as well as servicing youth across Hampton Roads. I came to know the McElroy's in October of 2021, when they reached out to me directly trying to get assistance with how to operate in the city the right way. Formerly having a brick and mortar and just knowing city officials and community advocates, they thought that I would be a good connection for them to go about proper processes and procedures as far as the city of Portsmouth goes. We had several meetings where they expressed their concerns, laid out their plan, and asked for direction and guidance in regards to what to do. My, myself, I'm not the right person for the job, and I was fully aware of that, but I made sure that they were in contact with people that they needed to be in contact with to do things the right way. Along the way, they had, they were very transparent about the hiccups, their unknowiness of certain procedures, protocols, and things of that nature, but they were determined to do things the right way, proper and in order. They wanted to bring something new to downtown. They wanted to bring something different downtown, a place that was inviting for anyone, for families, for adults, and for people of all ages. And from anyone that I've seen personally walk into that building, they have been met with smiles and warm welcomes, they have been greeted, and they have been introduced to a place where they could do anything. They could buy books, they could make candles, they could be with their children and read and play games. They could have book signings and read to the children and have storytime, so many different things. With this use permit, we could bring something new for families to the city of Portsmouth, to the downtown area. There's not so many things. While the libraries and the rec. centers are available, while the children's museum is here, where can we go any other time that's free and open to the public? There's not too many options. I've taken my daughter there personally a number of times, and she's seen books with little girls that look like her. And that's not often that you find solely books that little girls can find, people that look like them. From our meetings, from our conversations personally and professionally, they are committed to being different, but doing it the right way. They wanna create safe spaces. They wanna create places for meetings of the mind so that local community leaders, so that local community advocates for organizations, we can come together, bring our kids, bring the community, and have a safe space to do these things together. Granting this permit would not only be a step in the right direction for the vibration of downtown Portsmouth, but it would also be a, a step in the right direction and a willingness for other businesses like them that might be a little unique or a little different to say, maybe I have a chance in Portsmouth, too. Maybe Portsmouth is my home for my business as well. Granting this permit is more than just saying yes to The Book Club, it's saying yes to future businesses for the city of Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to come and speak on this public hearing item? If you would come forward, ma'am, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Gabrielle Gardner. I live at 2204 Evergreen Place, Portsmouth, Virginia, 23704. I'm a little nervous, so excuse me. I've known the McElroy's for about, I wanna say, eight or nine years now. I actually worked with April at the shop as one of the hairstylists for some years, and I love her, she's like a mentor to me, also like sister. I've learned a lot under them. I actually got to witness The Book Club from literally start till now, just blossomed into what it is. It's beautiful, it's sophisticated, it's classy, and it literally is all-in-one. I'm very proud to call them like family, and, and it's inspiring, really. I just wanted to make a couple of statements about like the noise complaints and whatnot. I was at the karaoke nights where the music was really loud and things of that nature, but they have tried to have the person who was over the karaoke nights tell them to, you know, bring it down a notch. And when it wasn't working with him and the noise complaints came in, they actually, I've, I've been in the facility where they were talking to someone and replacing that person with someone else who was going to be more compliant. I just wanted to make that said, that they are, they're working on things, they're working on getting it worked out so that everyone can be happy. But I've attended all kinds of events there, from the comedy night to karaoke, to last year, Juneteenth, I actually had the honor of, during the open mic, I was, you know, the spokes, what is it, the emcee for the open mic. And it's just a really beautiful place. Literally, nothing quite like it downtown. And I think that it just, it really opens doors for just more, like, just growth downtown. Like, everybody can kinda have somewhere to be, have somewhere to go, and then people can go from there. Downtown is, or Old Town is growing. It's, it's, the businesses are growing, so we all have to kinda like, I hate to say, get with the times, but if we wanna see our city grow more, we need to make accommodations for that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Seeing no more coming forward, this public hearing is closed. We do have a need for a motion and a second. Move for approval. Is there any additional discussion amongst my colleagues on council? Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for this opportunity. All of our speakers, I've listened intently to the comments that you've made. I've had detailed conversations with a lot of you. I've enjoyed getting to know you on a level where I didn't know you before, and you probably didn't know me. But this is what Portsmouth is about, and this is what living is about, and this is what serving is about, and this is what business is about. The information that's been provided in this packet, we have a, a big packet, and of course, the page that I have flagged for myself is the Certificate of Occupancy that came from the, the planning department or Doug, the, of building official officer. And it states that The Book Club is a banquet hall. And of course, that's one of the things that, that people look at, The Book Club, banquet hall, what do you do there? Well, when I first saw the space, when we went for the ribbon cutting, I thought it was beautiful. I thought this is an opportunity for diversity in our city. They put a lot of work into it, of course, the, the keeping, the upkeep and getting it up to standards, and of course, learning along the way, and being a business owner- And being a business owner myself, one of the things that we learn as we're in businesses, that you're going to do some things right and you're going to do some things wrong, but nobody's going to cut your head off and say you can't do business anymore because you made one mistake. We have something that's called corrective actions. And the corrective actions list the things that you have done wrong, and it gives you an opportunity or a timeframe to correct those actions. And this is exactly what the planning commission, the planning department is issued to us now. My first question, coming right out of the gate, was what were the conditions that they asked you to comply with? And they were the sound barriers over the door, over the front, over the ceiling and the space. And I would see this as an opportunity for us to look at our downtown, because I didn't realize that there was a mixed use of businesses and residents. I didn't know that Mr. Slakes, that you lived above, you know, and that you shared a wall, and I didn't know the Kaplan's. I spoke with Ms. Diane Kaplan and had a detailed conversation and enjoyed the time that we used to meet each other in this space. But what I would ask you, all of us, to do is to look at our downtown and to look at different opportunities, diverse opportunities to bring different people there. I've been there for a book signing, I've been there for an awards program, I've been there for a kickoff, for a political campaign. We don't have a lot of places that we can go and have this open space where we feel company, where we feel comfortable entering that space and where they're welcoming us in. And I've had the invites, I've had the invites from Mr. Wright for Your Garden Store, but frankly, I've not had any invites from a lot of the businesses in the downtown. But I have been to a lot of businesses, I've been to Gospel, I've been to Grifts, I've been to, of course, everyone goes, you know, to Roger Brown's, but I frequent all of the spaces, and pretty much, they're all using and doing the same type of business. So we have to be honest as a council, what is being allowed in the downtown? And did they all start with a use permit that allowed them to do the things that they do? Or did they gain that opportunity along the way? And I know that, you know, this is a tough decision for us, but there is an opportunity for us to learn from all of this, from each other as well, because we have a diverse community, we have a diverse downtown, and I don't think it should be limited to just one type of business, these four and no more. We have to be open, we have to be open minded, we have to be open hearted. And I believe that this business is not going to come in and say that they're going to do this and to do something else. All of those other things that we heard about in the past with pop ups and window coverings and whatever smells or whatever you've seen, I think everybody in the community was doing those kinds of things. And it wasn't just this business, there was tons of other businesses all across this city that I saw, some that I called out, some that don't ever get a slap on the wrist. So I'm going to go into this with the open heart, that this is their corrective action plan. And if we want a council to take a look at this, if we could do a sixty or ninety day or a hundred and eighty day, whatever, you know, the conditional use permit is, you know, to see that they're going to be complying, I believe their council, their attorney is going to hold them to the standard, because I've been held to some myself by him, and I've seen others as well. So I know what this is, I know what it looks like, and I just want everyone to have an open heart. So I've listened, and I said that I would reserve my comments and my decision for today, and I know you know that I'm the swing vote, you've already heard three say yes and three say no, and so I'm the one who would make that decision. And so right now, my heart is telling me to be supportive of this situation.
Ma'am, if I can have the floor, I just want to correct one thing.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm sorry, ma'am. There can be no temporal condition. You either accept it or you deny it, there can be no temporal condition.
My approval is to approve.
Very good, ma'am. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I've also listened, and I, while I hear my cohorts describing the process to come into compliance, in my mind, the thing that's different about this case from others, at least others that I've seen, this is the one and only time that our police chief has offered an opinion, and his opinion doesn't object to the book club operating as a book club. His opinion is to recommend not approving the expansion of the use permit and zoning to allow entertainment. It's unfortunate that Chief Jenkinson's here tonight to provide more insight into the letter that he's provided us, but the fact that he took time to write a letter as our senior public safety official, I respect his opinion, and that in and of itself makes this an easy decision for me. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Seeing no other comments from my colleagues, we have a motion and a second. I would ask everyone to please vote electronically.
This item is adopted for three.
And because of the length of that public hearing, we do have some additional public hearings on the agenda. If we could just take a three minute recess, counsel, so that we can gather ourselves, and we will return back at 8:39 to resume our public hearing, the next item. Thank you. We are going to resume our regular council meeting at this time, and we have come to the next item on our agenda, still on public hearing, item B, Z-23-04. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
Ordinance granting the request of Don Scott Esquire on behalf of Safe Store Real Estate Co. LLC to rezon approximately 5.38 acres at Zero Effingham Street from downtown D1-T5 Sub District to conditional general mixed use in order to develop a self-service storage facility. The applicant is concurrently requesting a use permit for the self-service storage facility use. The future land use map of the Bill One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use employment. The property is owned by the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Planning Commission recommends approval. And the ordinance reads, ordinance amendment, excuse me, zoning ordinance, amendment ordinance, Z-2304.
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present? Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address, you will have ten minutes, sir.
Yes, sir, Don Scott, 4316 Midfield Parkway, Portsmouth, Virginia, 23703. I'm here on behalf of Safe Store. First of all, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of council, always good to see friends. As you guys know, this site history, this place, Abex Railroad Products used to be here, operated a foundry from 1928 to 1978. They built a Washington Park House and constructed adjacent to Abex, 1960s. 1990, the site was designated as a superfund site due to lead contamination. 1993, residents relocated. 2006, Washington Park was demolished. It's been vacant from 2006 till now. My client wants to build a storage facility here. We've gone through zoning, been approved unanimously. We're asking that you grant this, this project. It is a $11.5 million investment here in the city of Portsmouth. Annual income, revenue will be somewhere between, from the beginning, probably five, four to 500,000 as they build up, up to 1.4 million. That's money for our tax rolls here in Portsmouth. That land has been vacant, as you did the math, over thirty years, not receiving any revenue or income. My client has to do a lot of work on this project, has to bring in saw to go up seven feet. That's a $300,000 cost alone. The zoning and the planning staff have done a great job of telling us what we needed to do to be in compliance. We're in full compliance with all of their recommendations, we agree with everything that they have. And I'm an attorney, I did, I went to law school because I was told there'd be no math, and so I have an engineer here to back me up. Come on up, in case anybody has any questions related to this, but you've heard this project before, and I think we've answered all of the questions for staff and for council as we've moved on in the past. And I know there are some with some concerns around EPA, but EPA, this is one of the approved processes. In our proffer, we did, we did state what the uses were for that site, and this is one of the approved uses, and we're just asking you to grant us that. I did also, I did also, I know y'all are very concerned always about civic leagues. Civic League voted unanimously. We went to a meeting, and that has not changed. Civic League at Brighton and Prince Park Civic League approved and recommended this. Also, the land, as you heard, is owned by PRHA. The executive director, Ed Bland, is in 100% approval of this project. He also was at the planning commission to present and stated that he could not be here tonight. So I'm hopeful that you will approve this, this first item. And the second item, it will be not a lot of new information, they're very similar because the way we have to do zoning and use, we have to do them separately. So that's why I'm hopeful that I will not take up a lot of your time for the citizens and for your busy schedules.
Thank you, sir. To my colleagues on council, are there any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I did have a question of procedure in order to the clerk. Ma'am, we do have the zoning and the use permit, so if the zoning is approved, then we don't have to go through the use permit, is that correct? Or we still have to go through both of them?
Yes, you have to do them separately.
Okay.
It's only if it's denied.
Only in denial, that's correct. Okay, I just wanted to clarify for the group. Okay, in any event, sir, we thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, on the zoning permit, if you would like to come and speak on this item, you are welcome to come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening again, mayor, council, and other neighbors. Mark Godildeguitrofsky, P.O. Box 50141, Portsmouth, 23703. I would just like to say that lemon trees must be more prolific than we think, because as we see here, life hands out an awful lot of lemons. This property has undergone a lot of transformation in its time, and unfortunately, during the time that I've been here, most of it has been as fallow ground. We have not been collecting any revenue from it. It's been a liability to us, and I am thankful that we have some lemonade makers in the room who are going to put something on that property that will bring revenue to the city of Portsmouth if you approve the use permit and the zoning change. And that will allow it to be productive in one respect where it cannot be in so many others. So thank you, applicants, for your perseverance. This is your third time around before city council, and I hope the third time will truly be the charm.
Thank you, sir. Once again, this is a public hearing on item Z-2304. If you wish to speak on this item, you'll come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. We are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion amongst my colleagues on council? Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes. Yes, I'm going to be consistent as I was on the last vote and vote no. I am still concerned about the history of Washington Park and the issues with the contamination, although there have been some corrective actions, there are risks there. I do not live in the area. I'm not comfortable with voting on something that is not going to possibly affect me, that could affect those that are in that area. And I'm not willing to put the economics ahead of the risk, so I'm going to be voting no again.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I'm going to be voting no. One of the reasons I'm going to be voting no is because when I look at some of the surrounding cities, when I look at Chesapeake bringing the public, so I look at Norfolk doing construction on a multimillion dollar shopping center, Entertainment Plaza, or Suffolk with a new robotics fulfillment center, Amazon. So I look at this area specifically, and I was, I lived in Southside for a little while, my family stayed out of Washington Park. This is an extension of our downtown area. And to me, putting a storage in a, and right there, when people come off the tunnel, come out of the tunnel, and they see though when they're leaving, it kind of, in my opinion, puts us in a situation where a store says that we're just putting our hopes and dreams away in what this city really could be. This city could really be something special, and that area could bring a lot of people to the city of Portsmouth. And just in that area alone, you have already six different storage facilities in a mile radius. So we're definitely not lacking when it comes to storage, but I just think that we need to be putting things in place that's going to bring people to the city of Portsmouth, that's going to provide entertainment to the city of Portsmouth, and that's going to be a benefit and real tax revenue. And also bring jobs. I mean, most storages bring what, two or three jobs? And I know we always talk about tax money, but all tax money ain't good money. We need things that's going to actually bring revenue to the city, that's actually going to lower our taxes, because we keep hearing this thing that, oh, it hasn't been giving us taxes for years, but yet our taxes are still high. That's because we're not bringing good tax, taxable income to the city. So I'm going to vote no, I've consistently voted no for the last two times. I just think that we could really use that area to benefit our city, and I know it's a superfund site, but I've done the research, and I'm sure everybody else has, too. We can do more than just a storage facility. So that's my time.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no other questions or comments from my colleagues, I would ask that you vote electronically.
This item is adopted 5-2.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item, item C, U.P., use permit, Z-23-11. And would you please read the use permit we are considering for this item?
Resolution granting the request of Don Scott Esquire on behalf of Safe Store Real Estate Co. LLC for a use permit for a three-story, 103,550 square foot self-service storage facility with 793 units on the approximately 5.38 acre property at Zero Effingham Street. The property is concurrently zoned downtown in the T5 Sub District. The applicant is concurrently requesting a rezoning of the property to conditional general mixed-use zoning district. The future land use map of the Bill One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use employment. The property is owned by the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions. And the resolution reads, a resolution granting a use permit to Safe Store Real Estate Co. LLC to develop and operate a three-story self-service storage facility having approximately 793 units at Zero Effingham Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is the applicant present? Attorney Scott, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Don Scott, 4316 Midfield Parkway, Portsmouth, 23703. Ditto? Because I already said, y'all want me to say the whole thing again? Because we already have all the information.
You have the floor.
Information has not changed, so I entertain any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions from my colleagues for the applicant? Thank you, sir, for your time. This is a public hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak on this public hearing, if you would come forward, state your name and address, ma'am, you will have five minutes.
My name is Donna Lee Biggs, 3104 Garland Drive in Portsmouth. I was just interested to look at this use permit for three-story, 793 units of, I guess, storage places by PRHA. And I was looking at their mission statement today, in fact, and I was trying to evaluate if this was matching up with their mission statement. if this was matching up with their mission statement. But the other thing I was thinking about is, we have all this homeless folks in the city, and could they use some of that area to make like little units for homeless people to be in it?
Thank you, ma'am. Once again, this is a public hearing. Seeing no more coming for, sir, are you coming to speak on this public hearing? Seeing no more individuals coming forward, we will now close this public hearing. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion from our colleagues on council on this item? Seeing none, I would ask that we vote electronically.
This item has been adopted 5-2.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now, that concludes the public hearing items for this evening. We are now moving to the City Manager's Report on the agenda, and our first item on the agenda, Item 23-dash-235. And, madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting $18,938.57 from the City of Hampton and appropriating said amount in the FY 2024 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services for the Women in Public Service Conference.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted 7-0.
I'm sorry, there was a speaker on that item, and I apologize, sir. I missed that. I apologize. I apologize, sir.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Council, other neighbors, fortunately you voted as I would have had you vote, so I'm not mad. But I felt that this should not go unremarked because it's a rather unusual, if not unique, sort of occurrence, at least in my tenure in the city of Portsmouth. It's not a huge amount of money, but to me, it's an act of neighborliness from our neighbors in the city of Hampton. So what they are doing is turning over $18,938.57 from their funds as essentially a gift to us in support of a very worthwhile program. As the background documentation states, and I'm going to read it because I can't improve on it, the Portsmouth Fire, if my phone will cooperate with me. Thank you. The Portsmouth Fire Rescue and Emergency Services Department previously hosted women in public service conferences in Portsmouth for 10 consecutive years before the event moved to Hampton in 2019. This year, the conference will return home and be held in Portsmouth on September 6th through 7th, 2023. The purpose of the conference is to provide an avenue for public service professionals to learn, network, and share personal and professional experiences. Even though the conference is primarily designed for women, all attendees will benefit from the insights offered. The conference will provide a variety of practical training on culturally conscious leadership, financial literacy, health and wellness, social media savvy, and more. Here's the essence of it. The city of Hampton has returned to the city of Portsmouth the remaining balance from the conference held in September 2019 in the amount of $18,938.57. The balance is an accumulation of registration fees, come on, of registration fees, sponsorships, and vendor fees that remained after completion of the 2019 conference. The funds will be utilized to pay for facilitators' venue, food, equipment, supplies, small gifts for registered attendees, and other items necessary to assist with hosting the conference. This program does not require a local cash match or in-kind services. So essentially, it's a no strings gift from a neighboring city to help us do something worthwhile within Portsmouth and within the region. So thank you, city of Hampton. Thank you for being good neighbors.
Thank you, sir. Our next item, Item 23-dash-236. And, madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting continuum of care planning grant funds in the amount of $44,201 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and appropriating said funds in the FY 2024 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Services for Portsmouth continuum of care planning activities.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move approval.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted 7-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item, Item 23-dash-237. And would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance accepting jail diversion funding in the amount of $50,451 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Healthcare and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2024 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund budget for jail diversion programs.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move approval.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted 7-0.
Thank you, sir, and ma'am. Our next item, Item 23-dash-238. And, madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance accepting permanent supportive housing funds in the amount of $741,804 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2024 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund to provide rental assistance and housing support.
Thank you, member. Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted 7-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 23-dash-239. And, madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance appropriating $2.6 million from the fund budget, from the fund balance of the general fund to the FY 2024 general fund budget, and transferring said funds to the school projects category of the FY 2024 Capital Improvement Fund budget to be used in conjunction with $2,41,513 appropriated and transferred to the Capital Improvement Fund budget by ordinance 2022-103, adopted at November 22nd, 2022, for the purpose of purchasing and installing weapons detection systems in the public schools.
Thank you, madam clerk. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, council members, please vote electronically. We lost the screen up top of the.
Hold on.
Council members, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted 7-0.
Thank you. That concludes our City Manager's Report for this evening. We've now come to new business and Item 23-dash-240, Boards and Commissions. Mr. Moody, do you have any boards or commissions?
Yes, I do, mayor. We have one item for council's consideration. I move that we renew a motion to appoint Barry Randall to our Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second.
We have a request to reconsider the appointment, to renew, excuse me, I'm sorry, renew an appointment of an individual. We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, then I would ask my colleagues to vote electronically.
This item is adopted 5-2.
Our next item, Item 23-dash-241, item submitted by council. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, this is for the city attorney, just a follow-up on, there were two requests regarding Sugar Hill, and that was the involvement of GPD-C, and also a follow-up on the historical context involving Dr. Cassandra Newby Alexander.
We have, thank you, Dr. Whitaker, we have contracted with Dr. Newby. She has provided us with a draft report. We're reviewing that report, and we'll get back with council when we can present that information to council.
That request was for her to appear before council personally?
Right. Before she is to appear, we wanted to understand what she would be presenting, so we have a report, and she also is hired to come and appear at a work session to present her findings, so we're working through that with her.
Okay, all right.
And with regard to GDPC, we have uncovered the deed document that you referred to, did discover that that organization was part of that transaction. What we're having difficulty tracking down is the context by which that relationship existed. What we know is that the GDPC was working with PRHA to acquire properties, and that deed transferred the property that was bid on by GPD-C to PRHA for disposition for the city. And so I did meet with Ed Bland and his deputy to get some background information. They were, they did not have any other information other than what was noted on the deed. I am working to get with our resident historian, May Breckenridge Haywood, who seems to always have an avenue to find these hard to research nuggets, and so we're continuing to work on that. As soon as I have some more information provided, I will do that.
Right. My question too, because you said GPD-C was working along with PRHA. Do you, well?
I don't know that. What I know is that the deed.
Well, let me finish the question. The question I have is, as far as that GPD-C entity, do you know the makeup of that entity?
The time of the transaction?
Right.
I do not. But I'm aware of what your investigation.
So I think you want to research the makeup of GPD-C, who was actually a part of that entity? Because when you said they were working along with PRHA, I was just curious about how that would be. Also, you had indicated that, and as we know, that the community there historically, African-American community, those properties were taken by the city through aggressive tax liens. In your report, you mentioned to us that all of those transactions occurred between city agencies when you reported back to us. GPD-C is not a city agency. GPD-C, that's why I want you to check out who makes up GPD-C, because the report that we received back, it said that Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing acquired a title to the property from a trustee's deed assigned by Greater Portsmouth Development Corporation.
Right.
So Greater Portsmouth Development Corporation, that's not a city entity. And it occurred on June 15, 2005, for $81,000 for 320 Quebec Street. That was just for one piece of property. The question becomes, what was GPD-C doing, involved in Sugar Hill? Because it's not a city agency, and I have questioned in the past, prior to your coming, that GPD-C has a private entity that's part of it. And how did that private entity become a part of GPD-C, making no investment, making no investment in it, but standing to profit whenever there would be transfers? And it goes all the way back to the old holiday insight. And so I would like for you to come back with the report that was originally requested, and that is the involvement of GPD-C not being a city entity. And if not, it goes to part of the issue that I have with what occurred on that property, and how council can't sit silently and just allow for this to happen because you have private entities and the city involved.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks for, Mayor. So I want to shout out the arrival of the GoTech bus coming back to Portsmouth this Saturday and all next week. So the GoTech curriculum is a curriculum that a few of us were exposed to in Danville, and the bus is outfitted with the learning aids for that curriculum, learning aids including robots, and 3D printers, and laser cutters, and a welding simulator, machining, coating. So a real opportunity for exposing our kids to cutting-edge, hands-on, advanced manufacturing career opportunities. What's important about GoTech for Portsmouth going forward, we have outfitted a GoTech classroom in Craddock Middle School, and the mayor and I have been working with Hampton Roads Workforce Council to get funding to outfit similar classrooms in the other two middle schools so that the kids that we have in middle school who are exploring their career opportunities will get a chance, starting this coming school year at Craddock Middle School, to train on these training aids in the GoTech curriculum. So if you and your kids are interested in seeing what this is all about, the GoTech bus will be at the farmer's market in downtown Portsmouth on Saturday, starting at 9:00 a.m. And then the GoTech bus will be parked at the Children's Museum for the coming week. Starbase, in collaboration with the GoTech folks, will be hosting a summer camp for some lucky kids to spend the week exploring the robotics features that are contained in the GoTech bus. Last year, when the GoTech bus visited, the mayor and I had a weld-off. You'll have to ask the mayor how that went, but we've decided this year, we're going to tag-team. So the mayor and I are issuing a challenge to any duo out there that wants to come weld against us. My top score, the mayor's top score, against the top scores of any two folks that want to weld against us. So we'll be there Saturday morning. We hope to get a good turnout and come on out and weld against the mayor and me. Neither one of us knows anything about welding, but we're going to have a good time anyway. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
If I could just check to make sure this is not in the official capacity, so we don't have any liability on the city.
There's no, and it's all virtual. There's no, and it's, it's, it's all virtual. No real, no real welding equipment, Mayor. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank, thank, thank you, Mayor. I want to follow up on Councilman Whitaker's questioning, question about GPDC, and I think it's related to Sugar Hill. And if my memory is correct, I think the, our city attorney has mentioned in the past, what, what involvement do we have in taking property back from historical transactions that this council wasn't aware of, that occurred before most of us were on this council? Is that a council issue, or is that a Commonwealth of Virginia issue?
It is a Commonwealth of Virginia issue at this point. The city has no authority to return historic property to anyone without Dillon Rule authority issued by the state.
And my, my other thing is, when you're tasked, a singular council member tasks you to do something, research, I would think that that requires staff time to do that. And I would think that you would need a consensus of council before you involve yourself and your staff in doing research predicated on one request. Do you, do you indeed have a consensus to continue with this research?
I act at the will of council, so it's, it's up to the will of council.
So, so you, you don't have a consensus? I, I don't recall a question of consensus coming up to, to do that. So I, I would, I would like to think that that won't proceed without a consensus.
Pursuant to the charter, I prefer not to get into the debate of it. I just would, I will serve at the will of council, and the chair makes rules of order and decorum, and so the chair would like to make that requirement. He can do so. I serve at the will.
I respect that. Thank you, Madam Turp.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Moody. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, to address what you didn't bring up, city attorney, with Mr. Moody's comment as far as it being the Commonwealth, you did outline to us in a report what council's role would be in this, and the steps council would need to take to make that happen. And it is not just purely left to the Commonwealth, but you explained that there are some things that now council would need to do to make that happen. And you particularly stated that, to me, that the ball is in council's court, and it's for council to move on that. So that's, that's the first thing. I, I understand it might be a Dillon Rule issue, but that does not totally remove council, based on what you reported to us, what council needs to do. The second thing, as far as a consensus, that consensus to report back to us on GPDC, that was given at the last council meeting, and you did not come back with the information, because you did not even know who the entities that made up GPDC were. And so how could you report back to us fully, based on a previous consent, and not have that information? So the, the consent is still there, because your follow-up is not complete.
Would you like to address that matter, ma'am?
No, I'm, I'm saying what I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, so the debate on the, the, the issue is, and it does rest with council. And so we have addressed the concerns, and the attorney is addressing concerns as they come up. Because this is a recurring matter, it has been acknowledged. It has been acknowledged by those who have put forth the information. The attorney is going to look into what she is capable and able to look into, based on the, the instruction of council. That is what is determined. So as a result, right now, we have addressed those matters, so it's time for us to continue to move on to the next item. We have addressed those matters of concern, they're being addressed, and we will wait for her to bring back the appropriate information. That is what we will do going forward at this time. Thank you. Are there any other items to be submitted from council? I do have an item. A couple of Fridays ago, we had a wonderful Olympic event with our own, our very own gold medalist, Mr. LaShawn Merritt, at the Cavalier Manor Rec Center. And it was, it was convened in short order, it was put together by the leadership of our city, city manager and her team, and, and our Olympic champion, Mr. Merritt. I was able to go out to the facility and do some exercises and stretches with the young people and their families. I didn't do many, of course, but I want to, I want to thank all those who attended that event, and particularly our very own native son, our Olympic champion, Mr. LaShawn Merritt. He does things continuously, unselfishly, to give back and pour into the youth of this community. And I was able to hear his story. I know our marketing director, Mr. Peter Glagola, was there. You know, he started out with dreams in that gymnasium. His mother was there, who was an educator, and it's always a good thing, and we don't do enough, and, and I'll say this from my perspective, I'm not speaking for any members up on the dais, but we don't do enough to support our, our young people in terms of, when they come and they show up to do these things for our young people, we all need to, as a city, to have the same zeal and zest, and motivation and desire to show up and make sure we give them our best. I just wanted to add that. And I want to thank Mr. Merritt, his mother, publicly for their work that day, and our city staff, because it doesn't get done without staff putting it together under the leadership of our city manager. So I just wanted to make that clear. Are there any other items to be submitted by council? Councilman Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask the city manager to update us on the senior gift card distribution. I know each of us are probably getting some calls inquiring about when they're going to get their phone call.
Thank you so much. So far, the event has been successful. We have our final day on tomorrow, which will be at Churchland High School. The individuals have been called that submitted an application and, and have been approved. So we also, with tomorrow, have a makeup day. So any of the seniors who submitted an application and missed their day when we had it last week, what was the last week? At Manor and at Norcom, they will be able to pick up their card at Churchland High School tomorrow. The hours are staggered based on the alphabet of the last name, but we will begin operations at eight o'clock, and we will end at five. And based on their last name, they are to show up to receive their card, to, to receive their card. I don't have the alphabet with the times with me right now. I should have been prepared. But I do know that the times will be, I believe they'll be on the website, but they are to show up tomorrow, starting at eight, based on the alphabet.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any additional reports on pending items, ma'am? Madam Manager.
No, sir.
Thank you. We've now come to the item on our agenda of non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach a speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the form, and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body, rather than to any particular member of the city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his/her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And our first speaker tonight is Katrina Drew. Ms. Drew, if you're still here, if you would please come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. I do not see Ms. Drew, so we will move to the next speaker, Mr. Mark Aldig Yotrowski. Mr. Yotrowski, sir, please state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening again, mayor, council, and other neighbors. So I was pleased to see you take action on the rules of order and procedure this evening. I have grave concerns as a person who cares about democracy when issues are left in the hands of a single individual. And what I think that council did in its consensus tonight was express interest in distributing the responsibility for a particularly important aspect of maintaining order in council proceedings. The removal of a member of council elected by the public from the chamber while business is, is ongoing. It's something that could be abused. I, I will not ascribe to our current mayor any ill intent in this regard, but I remember when the speaker's statement came into being, and it was not on your watch. And I don't have the same confidence in that administration that I have in the current one. So I feel it is better for democratic procedure for the body as a whole to have the final say in whether somebody, whether one of their colleagues is removed from the chamber. In regard to that speaker's statement, which is not enough maligned, as far as I'm concerned, there is a particular specification therein that irks me, having to do with addressing matters that only council can influence. And as I commented to one of you today, those of you who believe in a higher power must recognize that there are no matters that only council can influence. And certainly in our form of government, with a federal, state, in some places county and local government, the federal and state governments can do anything you can do, pretty much, and many things that you can't. So there is no such exclusivity involved. That particular specification, I believe, was written in just to provide a way of arbitrarily dismissing citizen comments. And I hope that in your next bite of the apple, the apple being the rules of order and procedure, you dispense with that particular wording. You know, this portion of the city council meeting, without that particular specification, used to be something of a community news exchange function, and I think that's appropriate. If somebody comes to this podium with information about something that will take place within our community, and is open to everybody in the community, this, to me, is an appropriate point in time in your proceedings for that to be discussed. Each of you individually, during items submitted by council, have the option of bringing those matters to the public's attention. And I don't see why the public should be disadvantaged in that particular regard. The other thing is, in terms of the demeanor of the speaker, I believe that you all should, in your own rules, specify the same thing for yourselves that you ask of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Keon Barrett. Mr. Barrett, you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Keon Barrett. I reside at thirty-nine-eleventh State Flower Court. So today I wanted to come again to speak about education. So in the news, we all heard about what happened in regards to affirmative action. And I would not be an advocate for education if I did not say anything, because in the city of Portsmouth, we are predominantly African-American in terms of the student population. A lot of my clientele, a part of Higher Purpose Learning, come from the city of Portsmouth. And I know that early on, when I was a kid, seventh grade, I always knew that I wanted to go to college. I wanted to get a scholarship. I wanted to do all these different things, but I knew that I had to work a little bit harder. I had to make sure that I was studying in school, getting good grades, and things like that. But if there was more support for individualized tutoring, if there was more support in the schools, I know that right now we're facing a teacher shortage. It's a crisis all across Virginia, all across the United States. And with that being said, how can we best support our teachers? By ensuring that students have not only support in the schools, with tutors and extra assistance in terms of special education teachers, teacher assistants, and substitutes, but also outside of school, because how much learning is being done when the kids are outside of school and during the summertime? In Richmond, in particular, there's been a lot of news about the Learning Acceleration Grant, how it was a debacle. But I will say that all of my clients, and a majority of them that reside in Portsmouth, were approved for the grant, and they have had no such issues with my company, because I take the time to walk the parents through the process. And I can't say that's being done by my other competitors within the region, within Hampton Roads. And it's because I really care about the students, and I care about their achievement, especially when it comes to Portsmouth Public Schools. And if we really want to be advocates for education, we will push these initiatives and ensure that we are driving these results in terms of elevating test scores, to ensure that we don't have to rely on affirmative action to ensure that our black and brown kids are achieving the success, but give them the resources right in the city where they can have access to it at ease. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Ron Sauer. Mr. Sauer, sir? If you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Actually, I think I'm going to go ahead and just bypass and let it go tonight. I just-
Okay, sir.
I'm sorry. I just can't do this.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Clyde Toler. Sir, you state your name and address. You have five minutes.
I am Clyde Toler, ten twenty-nine Brown Street, Portsmouth, Virginia, Poppy Section. I'm here tonight because I hear you're not going to have animal control no more. I call, I got coons, rabbits, you name it, fox. And I was told they're not going to pick up no more stray animals, dogs. And I want to know why. Because I got them running, I ran in my neighborhood, and I'm going to put a stop to them, because if you can't stop them, I can stop them. All of them. The other night I stayed up, three-thirty waiting, but they didn't come back. Coon was sitting in my rocking chair, my camera kept going over, and I went to the door and look, he's sitting in the rocking chair, rocking, three moles running around on the porch. And they left me a little present, too, you know, next bonus, so. And they left me a little present, too, you know, next one, so not gonna put up with that. I've been dealing with Ms. Bernadette, don't get on her, because she's doing an outstanding job, helping us in Parkview. And the peoples, what they do, they come in on Saturday and Sunday. And this one, from across the street from me, back to her neighbor, Hossfield, that's all historical. That's a house 40-some years, they ain't never been painted, right in front of me, peel and paint, everything. The grass, two or three feet high, and they cut it, they blew it all in the street, on the sidewalks, Sunday and left it. And by the time I got changed from church, I came back, I called the police, and he came, he said, he can't do nothing about it, I have to call Ms. Bernadette Monday morning, and I reported to her. But I think this need to be looked into, and I'm not the watchkeeper for Portsmouth, but everybody keep calling me, the older people look like me. But I don't hang out with them, because I'm old, too. I don't hang with old people, because I'm old. But anyway, on Florida Avenue in Portsmouth Boulevard, right up, in London Boulevard, right up there by Myhermon Church, go up there and look for about four months now. They gotta walk out in the street to go to church. And they said they had reported it, but when I find out, and it ain't nobody know, but here's what's happening with them. They said, I can't drive at night, I'm old, I'm old, too. I drive at night. But I bet if you told you was giving away $1,000, they all over be there here tonight. But I think you need to clean this city up. I rode down the Allyn Boulevard all the way. Them weeds is that high. They been like that, they says me a right was up there. Have any of you been down there and looked at that road down there? Hey, let's do something about that, that is ugly. Dead weeds. And I was sitting on my porch the other day, we done cleaned up everything, and here come this guy down the street with three beer cans and a bag, and he thought that I was right in front of my house. I wanted to shoot him, but I might go to jail, but I didn't do that. But I finally picked it up. But I would like to see peoples in this city move out and get together. I look at a lot of old peoples coming, people like me, I don't want this, I don't want that. You know why? Because they done got old there, and they don't go nowhere but go to bed, and everything they see new trying to come along, they come up here and fight it. Well, my dishes is dangling on the wall and the bars and things. Well, I don't believe that. If you like that, then what you need to do, then you need to do something to your building. But if all of us didn't like one another, I don't like this, I don't like where you live and all this, where would we be? I don't see no young peoples coming up here. Everything I see come up here, gray-haired, like me, and Mr. Booty, you know, well, I ain't picking on you, though, but you know, you up there. Anyway, I would like to see y'all take a little bit of, little bit of kindness in this city and go around and look and see what's happening in this city, and stop letting us come up here and tell you. Go look and see, when I come back up here next time, make sure you done been up and down this city and clean this city up, because it's really dirty, okay? And thank you for the talking to you. I'm Portsmouth proud, I forgot to tell you that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming forward. Our next speaker.
Mayor Vice Mayor, City Manager, um, oh, I see Ms. White ain't here tonight, huh?
No.
Fix that bitch out there, because the lady thought I was drunk and fell there, and I sit there and on, and I can't get back up. So take them old benches out of there, put some new ones out there, so I may be able to get up, okay?
Yes, sir, we'll look into that.
Sorry, now, you have to pick me up.
Yes, sir. Our next speaker, Dr. William Dotson. Sir, if you come forward and state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Love listening to Mr. Clyde. He's an entertainer. William Dotson, Mimosa Road, Portsmouth, Virginia. There's a couple of issues constantly coming up, and they're being grandstanding by a couple of members of this council. And it's getting old. It's getting real old, because they're not being treated as though they are issues. They're being treated in ways that are dividing us racially as a city, when we should have people bringing us together in the races. Sugar Hill's not being treated as an issue that needs to be solved. It's being treated as an issue to bring glory to a person who specifically wants to grandstand it. If we were really trying to solve this issue, we'd be trying to bring the races together to say, hey, listen, this is a real issue. We need to come together as black people and white people to solve the Sugar Hill issue. I'm tired of being berated as a white person by a member of this council over and over and over again. Grandstanding is a sin, and if there were a pastor in this presence right now, he would speak up and say, grandstanding is a sin. We do not bring personal glory to oneself. We solve the issue at hand. We research it, we spend some personal time, we make a motion, and we make it happen. The grandstanding should not be happening. It was nice today, tonight, to finally see a little bit of it calming down, to see less of that grandstanding that we've seen in the past. So I don't know what y'all did at the workshop tonight, but thank you. It was, seems to be somewhat productive along those lines. Second issue tonight is that I think that we are about to see our city's lunch eaten. There's two issues that are coming up. One is that Norfolk has proposed a casino development plan down at the waterfront that I think is much wiser than ours was. Yes, we needed the casino, yes, it's gonna bring some things, but I think we're gonna get our lunch eaten by Norfolk on it. We need to pay attention to an overall plan for the city and stop talking about little issues or arguing about little issues. Bring us together and come up with a plan that makes sense for the city. We need to pay attention to the business of the city, because that's being neglected right now. The other issue that is possibly coming up is we're having rumors of a mass transit system bypassing this city, that Chesapeake is in talks already with creating a mass transit system that goes around us. I don't know how serious it is, but it's been rumored by some of the council members. Thank you, Mayor, I don't know if it's full true, but I've heard rumors of it. We need to pay attention so that a plan doesn't come up that bypasses us. We need to have a mass transit system, we are long overdue. One that takes care of some of the parking problems that we have in the major businesses in our city. So when I speak of, let's have a plan, let's get together, let's have a plan, let's hit some of these issues before other cities around us hit us hard with these issues that could take us completely out. So please, let's get to the business of the city and stop neglecting it. Let's bring the races together to unite on some of these issues instead of presenting them in such a way that divides us. We're one people. We're a couple of different colors, but we're one people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Carol Leleberte?
Yes, sir.
How do you pronounce your last name?
LaLiberte.
LaLiberte?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I want to make sure I get that right. Thank you, Ms. LaLiberte.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Carolyn LaLiberte. I live in, on Chatham Road, in the lovely Luxley Place neighborhood. I have lived here my entire 60 years, moved out of my zip code twice, of 23702, but, so, I'm here tonight because I have a question. I've worked for the city of Portsmouth since 2011. In 2021, I was told that my job was going away, but I would not lose my job, I would be given a new job. I still don't have that new job. I still paid as a parts clerk, but I've been tasked with a whole lot more, more than, I mean, now, I'm in charge of motor pool. Anybody that comes to get a car, they talk to me or they schedule it through me. I'm been tasked with doing, making sure the vehicles get recalls. So it's not that I don't want to do the work, I love this city, I love working here, I love the people I deal with on a daily basis, but I feel like I've just been kicked to the curb, and I just want to know why.
Ms. LaLiberte?
Yes, sir.
Well, before I just give you an answer, I'd like to explain to you that as council, we cannot get involved in the day-to-day operation of our city. In fact, it's against the law for us to do that. So for you to come before us and ask the pointed question to council, that is not something that we can affect. What I would suggest to you in going forward, that you may have a supervisor, a department head, or perhaps someone in HR who could help you with that. The manager is here, she is the appointed person who handles all of those matters. Perhaps that's another avenue for you to go to, but in the interest of doing things properly and in the right way, we cannot, I cannot, answer that question for you.
I understand that. I was just very frustrated, and I didn't know where else to go. I've asked to speak to someone in HR, I got brushed aside, I asked my director about it, and he said he didn't have time. So I was totally frustrated, that's the only reason I came up here tonight.
Thank you, ma'am, for sharing that, and I would encourage you to continue to go through the process internally.
Thank you, sir.
That is the last speaker for this evening, and that concludes our speakers. So if there's not any other business to conduct, I know that the manager asked one more question, does she present the information about the timeframe of the gift card distribution? So Madam Manager, you have the floor.
Tomorrow, we will assist 23703. However, it is the makeup day for Norcom and Manor. So alphabets A through G will be serviced 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. Alphabet Z through R, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Alphabet S through Z, S is in Sam, through Z, 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. And so anyone who missed their dates for pickup on the prior two can come to Churchland High School tomorrow in those appropriate time slots to receive their card.
Since our meetings run, you might want to get a date so that persons will know what date you're talking about.
Tomorrow, Wednesday, July 12.
And the last thing that I would ask Madam Manager, if you could just, for the purposes of our residents that are here and council members, I know we've had some mechanical issues here at the city, and we were required to be closed from a certain time. If you could kind of let everyone know, just remind them of what that is.
So right now, we've had some issues with our air conditioning system, and we really fell into this issue again last year. Again, our building is old, but we are replacing our units, and it takes time to do that. At one point, it was an issue with supply, the supply chain being able to provide us with the fans. So what we did is, in order to continue to service our customers, we are servicing our customers between 8:00 and 12:00 noon this week, and then they're working from home from 1:00 to 5:00. But again, we're servicing, the building is open from 8:00 to 12:00 noon every day this week, and then customer, or our employees are working from home from 1:00 to 5:00, so we can continue to provide services. And again, the council chamber is on a separate unit to ensure that we can always have our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for that update. That concludes our meeting. This meeting is adjourned.